Under God, individuals with liberty and justice. Okay, thank you, everybody. Roll call, please, Shelley.
Mayor Demmett.
Here.
Alderwoman Evelyn.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyce.
Here.
Alderman Plouka.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Waggy.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Any changes to the, to the, to the agenda? Any objection to approving by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. Shelley, do we have anybody in the public that cares to address the board?
I see someone. I'm not sure if he's wanting to speak.
Okay. We'll give it a few seconds, see if they want to say anything.
Stu, you want to speak? Okay.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Well, then let's move on to the next item. Mayor and Alderman report. I really don't have one. Let's go into Alderwoman Evelyn. Do you have anything? Okay. Alderman Gould.
The only thing I wanted to mention is that we're going to be making some changes to the Ward Three meetings. We did cancel the most upcoming one. Will likely be going to a every other month kind of situations for any of those who are listening or watching on YouTube. Be on the lookout for more information on it.
Great, thank you. Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yes, as the library liaison, the library is complying with the county regulations and as of this week, they are back to curbside delivery. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Plouka.
Thank you. Did Alderman Lockmiller get a chance to make a report if he has one?
I do not have a. No report.
Okay. So my report is that on August 11th, we are going to have a Ward One meeting done virtually by Zoom and we'll publish that meeting address and get everything going. But we're going to meet a week from tomorrow.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sims.
No report.
Alderwoman Tyce.
Same report as Alderman Plouka.
Okay, and Alderman Waggy.
Same report as Alderwoman Sims.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is item six, new business. It's the Manchester Road Corridor request for proposal in issuing process. Just a quick background, there may be an intro into this before I turn it over to John. The reason I called this meeting was some discussion that I had with some of you months ago, maybe before the whole pandemic hit. And that was just to talk about where do we go? Where are we going to go with Manchester Road? As we all know, Brentwood Bound has consists of three components. Manchester Road Improvement, the connection to the GRG and the flood mitigation. What remains to be addressed is what are we going to do with Manchester Road? Now, we've, we've talked about that over the last year or maybe two years. We rezoned that entire area, came up with a new zoning district, thanks to Lisa and planning and zoning. And now the next step, if a step at all, is simply to discuss what is your vision? This by saying by your, I mean the board's vision because you all are the ones that are going to be driving this. You're the ones that are going to be determining what, if anything, the city does to try and see a change to that. You know, we've done everything that we, we can up to this point between, by ultimately, and hopefully in a few years, we'll have those acres removed out of the flood zone, which still has not happened. I mean, we, we know we have the Clomar and we have every indication that if we do what we're supposed to do, we will then get the Lomar, which is the re-designating that land out of the flood zone, but right now it's not. And then number two, the other thing that we did is, is we, like I said, came up with a new district and that whole area has been rezoned and it's, it's now in this in a package, if you will, but we want to hear from you and get some ideas, what staff can do. Where do you guys want them to go? Whether it's a, if you take again a chance to look at the, the RFP, a master developer or many sub developers. Do you want to help them out at all? Do you not want to help them? So that was the purpose for tonight's meeting, to get some direction, some sense of where you eight are looking to go. We have the, we have the comprehensive plan. We know what it's called out for, what the, what the residents want. Now we want to hear from you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John with PGA V and let him fill you in on what you have in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay. The request for proposal process was originally intended as a outflow from the development plan process, the concept development plan, and the zoning ordinance revisions you mentioned earlier, which were done almost simultaneously. And so the concept plan that was, was the work of the committee, the Manchester area planning committee, Manchester Planning Area Committee, I reversed the words, and the planning and the Planning and Zoning Commission and was ultimately approved in the form of the Comp Plan Amendment, which incorporates it, is, is what is out there in terms of the current vision. The the next step logically would be to issue a request for proposals. And it really consists of three components. Between the folks that Bola and Lisa visited with at ICSC and our own list or our own developers that we have worked with through other municipal clients. Generally, we don't, we don't work for developers. There is an address list of folks that we are suggesting be solicited as part of the RFP process. And a letter is drafted as a suggestion for the letter that would go out with that. And then in addition, we took the Brentwood Bound brochure that we prepared for you, what, two years? No, about 18 months ago, maybe. And, and boiled that down to the, what we think are the hardest hitting points on the, that amounts to the front and the back of a, of a piece that would get sent to the developers along with the letter. Again, we went through the list. I wanted to make sure that where anybody that Bola or Lisa had talked to, we had the right place to send it. And we had the right person to send it to. So if this follows through on that basis, each person who's going to get this letter is somebody that is in command and in the right position at that particular development entity. And they're kind of all over the country. We have not failed to invite, invite the locals, although I would, I would point out, this list includes the locals that we think will not drive you crazy. So there are others who are, who are purposely admitted, omitted, I'll admit to that. And then in addition, through our bond revenue work, which is national in scope, we've added some folks that we have, where we have been retained by a municipality to do a bond revenue analysis and/or some kind of market and revenue analysis and have found those people to do some excellent work and produce a quality product. So those people have been added to this list and this list is what, about 40, I think, right, Lisa? Now, back to the RFP document. This was not easy to draft, but we wanted it to be comprehensive. And at least at the moment, we can do one of two things. We can either print and send this out with the letter and the, and the little, and the flyer, or the letter as it's presently written, links the, links the developer to the RFP on the website. This would be, of course, posted on your website. So be, maybe before we talk about some other alternate mechanics to disseminating this, I'll get into the, into the RFP. Part one is basically background information. This is a combination of material that I wrote originally and then Lisa came up with some very good edits and some reorganization suggestions. So what you're seeing is a combination of her work and mine along with, along with then a review by Mark Murray, who's your special counsel for this project. So that, again, the first part is background information. And basically what it tries to do is focus on what a great place this city is and this location. And you will see some of the data from the brochure that has been lifted and inserted in here and then in some instances updated where there was more information available. And this walks you through a brief description of Brentwood Bound, the location assets, including demographic information, traffic and transportation data. That's all in part one. Part two is really telling the proposer, here's the territory. Here are the things you need to review before you submit. And all of those items that have links on there, those are updated links so that they can go straight to your website and get all of the information they need. And then part three is what you want their proposal to contain. And I would note that this is asking for quite a bit of information. You're not going to be able to throw something together to do this right. And of course, if they do, it'll get thrown out. And the developers qualifications are to be included. And then there are some other notations that are in part three of that section. This is basically on page 10, where we're telling folks that the city and the redevelopment corporation have not acquired the property beyond that, which is needed for flood mitigation. The city is going to own certain property. Oh, and that, and that you will assist us, the selected developer inland acquisition, that the powers of eminent domain are limited to the properties within the boundary that is shown on the map. We also recognize, we take recognition of the fact that there are spatial limitations on the north side of Manchester Road. Where, what we're telling prospective developers is if you want to do something there, you can acquire additional properties outside and adjacent to the boundary. But you know, we're, you're not going to get any acquisition help there. In essence, it'll have to be a arms-length transaction. And then the third part is the selection criteria. And and then the last part are the terms and conditions to the, to the submission. As the mayor noted in passing in his remarks, this basically doesn't shut off the door to somebody who may ask for an incentive of one kind or another. But what it says is you will have to prove up the need and the, to, to the extent you get consideration for that, it'll be a direct function of how well you meet the criteria that is in the zoning, in the comprehensive plan, so on and so forth. I I toyed with the idea of not saying that at all. However, I think what you will ultimately be faced with here is a situation where you're going to be asking developers to build internal roads that are not just for the benefit of their project, but are basically have a public benefit. Signalize an intersection on Manchester and they are going to have to acquire some properties that have improvements that have value, but won't be of any value to their project. In other words, they're going to have to spend some, some money that doesn't help their project in any way, impacts their ability to, to, to lease the prop, to lease the development components to, to others in terms of market rent. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, at the end, after I debated this in my mind, I said, well, it may be naive not to say anything, but in fact, to say you're going to really have to work to get the benefit. And let me wrap by saying the, the letter is intended to provide this, the solicitation in that, in essence, say, you know, we, we'd like you to consider the, a submission. Here's where to go for information. Here's who can answer your questions. And of course, Bola and Lisa and I have talked about how if I'm in the question loop, then we all have to have some method of making sure that everybody knows what was asked by somebody who, who called or talked to one of us. The purpose in having the, the names, we think, we are sending this to presidents, executive vice presidents and, and vice presidents for development management to some fairly significant firms around the country. It seemed to me that if we wanted to get their attention, it, it might be impressive if the mayor, Bola and the chairman of the redevelopment corporation all sign the letter. You all may or may not think that's necessary. Remember, part of what we're doing here is sort of a marketing ploy. Does anyone have questions?
I'm sure you're going to have a lot.
Well, I'm ready.
All right. I saw Steve's hands up first. Then I saw Brandon and Dave. Go ahead, Steve.
John, as far as a vision for that area, I guess as a board, we've kind of put in our boundaries with, well, we created the MC zoning area. We create, we've got our comprehensive plan for that sub area. Isn't it the developer in this proposal supposed to come back to us and wow us?
Yes. And we have, we have said in the RFP that what is in the concept plan isn't, isn't hard and cast in concrete in terms of where a particular element might go. But what we've said is you, you got to tell us and, and again, you've got all this information in terms of what the concept for this area is. Tell us what you want to do. And, and yeah, you're right, wow us.
Okay. Thanks.
Brandon?
Hey, John, can you, can you explain to me? So I mean, I'm looking at the property acquisition map of things that Brentwood would own when we're all done with this. And you know, a lot of the Manchester frontage property is not owned by, by Brentwood. So I guess it's not clear to me what we're signing up to or what, what expectation we're setting with these developers by sending this out of how much property would be available to them, how much they did have to go acquire. I mean, is this just a visioning thing or are we expecting somehow this would come to fruition?
There, we have had the collective, Bola and, and Lisa and I have had collective, have had selected discussions with several developers. One of which in particular has said that if they got the development rights to this area, they start tomorrow and they buy up everything in the boundaries. A subject to a plan, of course, that you all would approve. So what we're saying is, you know, tell us what you would do with this property. The reason you put this in a chapter 353 district was so that ultimately you could redevelop this corridor by some, by some planned method that meets your goals and objectives and therefore all of this property from an acquisition standpoint is up for grabs. It's just not that you're going to buy all of it. You're only buying what you are buying for the, or, and what you're needing for the flood mitigation project. So anybody can come along and propose a development plan here on the, on the basis of their acquisition of whatever property they're submitting a proposal for.
So if we see, if we see a response that just blows us away and we think it's awesome and we select that, that would developer would then have to go buy all those properties? I mean, I guess I don't quite understand what, what hammer we're even really swinging here because what would prevent another developer from buying up that property and, and doing something that was compliant with the MC district? I mean, how are we picking winners and losers in this?
Well, there, there technically isn't any way, Kevin helping out here, there isn't any way that somebody can't come in and there's already, if somebody has thrown a proposal on the table or a development in that office building area down on the southwest or southeast end of the area. And certainly, there is nothing that prevents somebody from doing that and submitting a plan for that development. But because it's in a redevelopment within the boundaries of a redevelopment corporation, does not, doesn't the redevelopment corporation have review authority?
Right. Well, we're also going to only exercise the economic incentives, economic development incentives in accord with our program.
We can't hear.
Okay. Hey, Kevin, could you, could you repeat that?
Yeah, the city would also only access, allow the economic development incentives in accord with the plan that it has favored. And would only engage in assisting acquisitions through eminent domain in order to foster the plan that the city has approved. Someone's still going to have to come in and build with the plan that the city's approved. So I think we do have the whip hand in terms of who's going to control.
I'm not hearing that at all. We can't hear it.
Hey, John, John, can you repeat what Kevin said, basically? Legally.
He's going to try it one more time.
There we go. There we go.
Okay. So what I was saying is that the city would also only engage in the economic development incentives with its, the developer who's providing the plan that the city has approved. The city would also only assist in acquisition with the use of eminent domain if necessary, only for the development of the plan that it's approved. And anybody that wants to get any of those benefits or produce a product in the area is going to have to produce the plan that we have approved for the area anyway. So I think we do have the whip hand in terms of the designation of a developer is a meaningful tool for the chosen developer. I might add, and John could probably address this better than I, that that designation will greatly assist the developer in financing their project.
And John used the term development rights. Is that what you mean by?
Yes.
Okay. So just two more things, and I'm going to beat Kathy O'Neil to this, but I am not in favor of any kind of economic incentive coming in unless there is some compelling situation that I cannot visualize right now. We, we are asking our, our town to spend $80 million of investment to create a greenfield improvement here and all the company or in all this, the businesses in this town are bearing the brunt of that and an increased economic development sales tax. I mean, I, I will not be in favor of any kind of economic development or any kind of eminent domain here to, to help us along. We, we have prepared this. It's, it's ripe for this kind of opportunity. It, it doesn't need us and that's my opinion.
Well, and I don't, I don't agree with you. I just don't think, I don't think we want to cut it off, but I don't think this encourages it either. It makes it clear that you've got to produce something that, that is of significant merit in order for that to be provided. And at the end of the day, that's up to the, that's up to the board. In other words, you can, somebody can ask for something and you can say no. Then they can decide whether or not they want to go forward.
Agreed. Agreed. And you could not include this, right? These are executive vice presidents of major companies. They understand that they can come ask for economic incentives. I, I would be of the opinion, your original thought, John, of not including it. So we're not even setting the expectation that that door is open. Again, these are professionals. They know they can always ask for something in any given situation.
But it's easy to take it out of there. I don't mind doing that.
All right, that's all my questions. Thanks.
No, and Brandon, I appreciate those comments because I think that's exactly what we're trying to, to get, get some information on, get some idea that, you know, we've been saying this, and I see you, Dave, I'll call you in a second. We, we've been talking about this for a number of years and, and I'm, I'm with you, you know? I was of the opinion, we're, we're doing all the, the hard work to get this in a position where hopefully somebody's going to come along and will do all the other work without any money, without any financial help from the city. Because we're, we're putting this all on our, this yoke is going to be on our shoulders and only on our shoulders. So I hear you loud and clear. And, and I think, you know, what, what John is saying, if this board ultimately, and, and again, I don't expect this board to be in a position to vote on anything really tonight. More, just give some direction and they can come back. We can come back with something at the next meeting and it might be, it, it doesn't include eminent domain language. It might not include some financial help or something like that. But, so I appreciate, I appreciate that that statement. Alderman Plouka. Thank you. I'm going to try from, try to keep from killing my dog here. Hey, knock it off. Knock it off. Sorry. So I, my, my two questions were along the same lines of what Brandon was asking. And I'm, I'm sure that, share the sentiment with Kathy as well, that I am not in favor of sending any signals to any developers that were interested in business, anything close to business as usual with regard to any kind of tax increment financing or any kind of breaks or deferments of tax collection as a result of this development. The only exception I would make to this, and I don't know that I'd even articulated in the, in the sales material or the solicitation material, is that if they came up with something that provided for infrastructure specifically contemplated by Brentwood Bound that is not yet funded, that might be the only exception, in my opinion, to where I might say, you know what? If you're gonna continue that walkway or that, or that area on the eastern end of, of the Brentwood Bound planned area, or if you're gonna come in and you're gonna finance and build an event lawn or one of the other things that were talked about in the western end of the plan. If you're gonna, if you're gonna talk about something specific that we've already put down as part of our vision and have already voted on as part of the plan, and you're willing to take that financial burden off the city, you know, as, as it pertains to the future, I might be willing to entertain that kind of a vote. But I don't know that I would signal that in this material. I agree with Brandon, I, I think it's better, in my opinion, it's better left out. The other, the question I had for you, John, was to what extent is it, is it relevant that the, the map that's contained on page seven and contained in the brochure, that the western side of that map is no longer really accurate insofar as Mary Avenue and some of the other configurations that are there? Is that really all that relevant in this material?
We, we've had that discussion, in fact, on Thursday of last week. And talked both with Craig and with Phil. And we have a, well, most of this map already reflects those things that Phil told us about, you know, months ago. It's the east end of this map that probably ought to be updated if we're gonna include it. And I, I, I guess my, my thinking is we ought to include it simply because how else do they, they're gonna, they're gonna see the same map on the website if we don't update it.
Well, but with regard to the western end, it doesn't include Brazu, it doesn't include all the way, all the way to Brentwood Boulevard, really, it stops short of that.
Yeah, right, the western end is, is what's not now correct.
Okay, all right, well, so I, I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I, I, my sense is reading this stuff that it was as much a sales pitch as anything else. And I'm not sure anybody's inclined to be or that we're legally bound by anything we publish at this point. Is that, is that true or do we run some potential liability if what we send out is not materially, you know, accurate?
Kevin can feel free to do anything he wants to with part four, but the terms and conditions part of this say you can do whatever you want. I mean, it's written, it's written to give you the option of not accepting anything or any proposal you get down for any reason.
Hey, Kevin, I saw a hand go up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I think that's, what John has said is correct. And we're not terribly bound. I did want to comment on the incentive and government cooperation component. My, my concern would be if we don't indicate that under extraordinary circumstances it could be considered. And someone comes in, makes a bid and has the killer plan from, from heaven that provides us all kinds of astonishing things. And we give them a deal and somebody comes in, comes later and says, hell, I would have bid had you told me that that might be possible. I, I think perhaps you'd be better off saying there's not gonna be incentives or condemnation unless someone can demonstrate that this is a, a solid gold program that, that will elevate the community in, in a direction not otherwise possible. And we've already committed public funds to make this area attractive and usable. All the things that, that Mr. Weggie and Mr. Plufka has observed. Put that in, saying you're not gonna get this unless it's absolutely astonishing. And even then you might not, as opposed to ignoring the issue or saying it won't happen. That's just my two cents.
Okay. Dave, Alderman plus K, you, you have anything else left? Okay, I'm, I'm moving, folks, I'm not trying to exclude, I'm moving from left to right on my screen. So the next hand up I see is Alderwoman O'Neal. And Nancy, you're on deck.
Thanks, I've got three questions. One's really specific about the developers that are on that list. One of them is Castco. I don't think we have worked hard to make this a park ambiance and invite Costco to pave over the rest of it. Can we eliminate Costco from that list of people to send a letter to?
It's not Costco, Kathy, it's Castco. C-A-S-T-C-O, different party altogether.
Excellent, okay.
A developer based out of Columbus, Ohio. And as far as I know, they have nothing to do with Costco.
Okay, that takes care of that concern. Then, when you explained that tax and tax money could be needed because of what they're building, I have never thought about who pays for building the streets inside a development like this. Does the developer put in all those streets or does the city finance that?
If I'm advising you, I'm gonna tell you to make the developer pay for it.
Okay, so would that be?
That's the standard operating procedure, quite frankly.
Is, okay, so that is the only possible reason I can see for having any tax financing extended at all. Other than that, I, I like what Mr. O'Keefe said about saying there's not going to be any extra unless you come up with something wonderful. I like that wording, I don't think we should say anything else. Okay, my last thing is about the whole ambiance of this. These are very cut and dried letters. And it, it's eminent domain, it's to financing, it's what we do. But there's nothing in here that gives our vision for having small businesses, family-owned businesses. This could open it to another Wendy's, haircut salons, all sorts of things that are chains. That's not what our vision really is. And there's nothing in here that sounds low-key friendly upscale if we can do that. We talked about restaurants coming in, building on the top of the hill with the back of the restaurant open so diners could look out over the, the creek and the green space. That's the kind of vision that I was hoping we could incorporate into a document like this. And I don't see that. How can we do that?
Well, I, first of all, somebody said it a minute ago. This, this is both a somewhat formal document and it's also a marketing piece. And it's one of the reasons that I, at least the way I tried to word it, we're telling them pretty firmly that before you submit, you have to go and look at the various documents, not the least of which is the comp plan supplement and the comprehensive plan and its, and its direction, which talks about the things you're talking about, Kathy. In other words, I thought, okay, if, if, if we're going to get them, if anybody's gonna get serious about this, they need to go look at, at those documents. Number two, the property that's available here isn't gonna be suitable. And nobody's gonna spend the money, I don't think. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we can't, we can't put some words in there like you're talking about. I'm just not sure that you have to be careful how much you try to put into this document or if our people won't even read it. And, and that's why my inclination is we don't send the document, we send the flyer and the letter hoping that, that they will get enough, you know, if I, if I have this map on the front page of the flyer that shows Brentwood in the center of the St. Louis universe, that I would think might get somebody's attention, you know what I'm saying? But we can certainly go in and, and put something in about the, the types of uses or the, the feel you're trying to create. I mean, I think it's in the documents we're referring to. It's on page six where we say the city and the redevelopment corporation have a vision for the area that is generally contained in the text and graphics of the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan supplement.
I, I don't think the comp plan really stressed sustainability. If we can fit that word in here somehow, that might give them a clue, do you think?
It doesn't hurt anything.
Thank you.
Doesn't hurt a thing.
Okay, Alderwoman type.
So I have two questions. First, I would echo the other sentiments about taxing districts and it would really, they'd really need to do something like, the other thing we've talked about is burying the electric lines. I mean, there would need to be something pretty significant before I would be willing to agree to that. But can you talk a little about eminent domain? I'm not sure this is a question for Kevin or John, but if eminent domain is needed, what's the city's role and what's the developer's role? Does the developer buy the property and the city helps or does the city have, how does that work?
Well, we're, Kevin and I are pointing each other, so I'll start out and then he'll tell me I'm wrong. Basically, the developer submits a proposal that includes the acquisition of certain parcels to implement that plan, whichever those are, whether it's the whole thing or some chunk of the area. And so the developer goes to the property owner and tries to make a deal. And if the property owner wants, you know, 300 times market value, then that's where the city comes in. The city must conduct any eminent domain on behalf of that developer to acquire that property. Is that basically it, Kevin?
Yeah, that's correct. The developer doesn't have any eminent domain authority on their own or by reason of being designated as the, as having development rights. They only have those rights, that, that authority rests exclusively with the city. We can enter into an agreement to allow them to exercise that right on our behalf, but only if we choose to do so. And all of the costs of that, both the litigation and the cost of acquiring the property are borne by the developer, not by the city. But private developers do not have eminent domain authority. The city does. And they only can exercise it if we choose to allow them to exercise it. And again, they're gonna have to make a hell of a case before you'd agree to it.
Perfect, and I have one more question. So the people who, I don't know if this is John, Bola, Lisa, the people who you all have talked to have been interested in this, is this pre-COVID, post-COVID? I mean, the world's really different than it was six months or a year ago. And is anybody interested in spending any money on anything right now?
Well, I, the way I would put it is that it's both pre-COVID, pre-COVID and post-COVID. And what we're seeing in the development arena, wow.
Maybe it was me.
Is there a way to turn it off?
Lisa's off, you can try now.
Yeah, if we can just mute everybody in that room, that will do it.
The, the, the direction that we're seeing at the moment, for example, office buildings are in flux. And some folks are predicting that people are going to do, need less office space because there'll be more work from home and that'll expand. Although I can give you very learned folks who will tell you otherwise. Retail is on a, on a trend that is, that is not new and started probably at least seven or eight years ago. Bricks and mortar won't go away. But what we are going to see is stores with less footprint because the store becomes more like a showroom. You have Amazon opening grocery stores. Now we have a scenario where I'm predicting, based on some information I've seen, we'll see if I'm right, that Amazon opens, in essence, a department store. And if any of you are old enough to remember something called service merchandise, our best stores, Kathy was shaking her head, that's, what, what was that? It was a showroom. You went in there, you bought your stuff and, and it, it was either shipped to you or it came out of the, the depths of the earth, the basement on a conveyor belt and you walked out the door with it. It wasn't stopped.
I can't hear that now.
Yeah, right, and so, you know, Macy's isn't gonna need 150,000 square feet for anything anymore. If you look at Walmart, 127, 20,000 square foot Walmart super center does almost 60% of its sales out of the grocery store. Everything in the other half of that, in the other part of that store, they could sell online. They don't need 120,000 square feet. So yes, it's changing, it's evolving. But this particular area and your particular demographics and where you sit in the metro area, to me, says that all of those smaller scale things, even the restaurant business, you know, a lot of the, the, the local, the local restaurants are struggling. But guess who before COVID was doing very well? And guess who wasn't? The ones who weren't were the chains. Because they don't, they, they don't, you know, am I gonna make it my thing to go, you know, every couple of weeks to Applebee's? Or whatever, you know, as opposed to a Bartolino's, a Charlie Gito's? I, I can think of all of the trendy restaurants that are out there right now, like Kathy suggested. The current plan has one that might overlook where, where now you have the, I think the dog park and the other park part of the plan. But if we redo that drawing, we're gonna put something there like that. That's a long answer to your question. I mean, I don't, I think what we're seeing is, like I said, we had one national developer who loves doing this, what I call mixed juice kind of stuff and said, well, you know, you put it out for RFP, we'll submit and we do it tomorrow. And we'll see.
Thank you.
Mayor Dimmitt, if Lisa, okay, good.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa, to you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would say an answer to that question is we haven't really done any active prospecting to some of the developers on the list. We were not able to attend, for instance, ICSC Minmay out at Vegas. But Brentwood has such a strong market presence here in the St. Louis area. And so I can tell you that on a weekly basis that we are getting calls already, and so I'm already fielding calls. And obviously, you know, I want the board to feel comfortable with everything we're doing here this evening and with the discussion before we move forward. But I guess I would definitely say it's in the city's best interest to try to get this RFP out on the street as soon as possible. We had a really good discussion with a prospect just last week that again, came to the city. And that's probably at least the third time that we've talked now with that potential developer. I also have interest really on a weekly basis about people that are wanting to submit development applications to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. I have one right now that could be probably submitting for the September meeting. I have one right now that could be probably submitting for the September meeting, and I don't even really know too many of the details of the project on that one. But again, I guess I just want to impress upon the board is that Brentwood is such a strong community here, and it's such a desirable location, both physically, economically. So I think the city is going to be much better off as soon as we can get something out there and start kind of actively pursuing some of these leads and knowing, again, the direction that the city wants to take. So as we go into discussions, we certainly understand the direction from the board and can make that as part of our ongoing dialogue with these developers.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, you're next. Pat, I do see you, and I'll take you after Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, buddy.
No worries. John, you talked about the incentives. You know, I'm going to echo some of my other Alderpersons as well as saying that, you know, I think what we should be doing, I know that you probably need to acknowledge that that's a general practice of these type of developments. I do think, though, that we should caveat that with a significant amount of language that talks about the, you know, huge investment that we've already made. And that, you know, to Alderman Wegi's point, we have created an environment now that is available to redevelop. So I don't know that we need to be offering too many more incentives. But I did want to clarify one thing. When you talked about public roads that they potentially might need to be creating, if MoDOT has already created most of the curb cuts and public road access, what more public roads would they be creating? Or is it just, if they were to create something, you know, behind the redevelopment area or behind, onto the south of Manchester and create a pedestrian area, are there roads? Is that what you're talking about?
If you remember the plan, Jeff, the only way, we think, and it's what Crawford Bunny Bremeyer told us, there is a loop road that is created that on one side borders the park and then encases the development. This is on the south side of Manchester. If you look at that concept plan, there's a loop road that connects from Breckenridge Industrial and on over to intersect with, I can't think of the name of the street now. No, that connects over to the north-south street.
Salem.
Mary.
Salem, that's it. And in order to make it work from a traffic standpoint, we laid that out as if it's a 36-foot road, 36-foot cross-section.
Okay.
So it's not, I mean, that was what I was referencing. That isn't going to be cheap to build.
Yeah, and I would also echo that we would definitely, I want to make sure that we're updating these to make sure that we're taking into account the most up-to-date changes to the flood mitigation area and the paths, to make sure that those roads that we outlined, this, I remember this design, this was done several years ago, or at least a couple of years ago. So I would definitely want to update that and make sure that we're not inaccurately showing the area. I would also say, as the sitting marketing expert, if there is a purpose of marketing for this, that flyer could be redone to make it look a lot more enticing, with a lot of the images and renderings and kind of the language and consistency with the other Brentwood-bound materials.
I was trying to save money, Jeff.
I know. I get it.
The document only, and we need to, we'll look, take a look at the wording. It's really only addressed in a couple of places where incentives are concerned. And one of the things that we want to make sure they tell us upfront, for example, their proposal content, there's a, it's on page nine, specifically requires them to tell us what incentives that they are seeking from, whether it's from the city, the county, the state, whoever, so that you don't get a proposal that, that all of a sudden, you like the looks of, but it says, but you know, then you're not negotiating with the developer, and they say, "Oh, yeah, did we tell you we want X or Y or Z?" I think you want to have them divulge that on the front end. Now, we don't have to include that. We can leave it out, but I was concerned about getting surprised. And the second thing in what you mentioned, based on the discussion I had with Phil on Thursday, the plan as drawn recognizes those areas that are in the current design, except, as somebody pointed out, on the very west end. And that's where the drawing would have to have some alteration, because that part of the plan has apparently changed.
Well, yeah, and I think that that part of the plan is pretty significant, though, when it creates the aesthetic, like Alderwoman O'Neill was talking about. You know, if you talk about a lake and an amphitheater and some of the amenities that are funded, as well as maybe some of the, including some of the currently unfunded, the future plans, it starts to set the tone and the level of quality that we're looking for.
Yeah, well, and I don't want to give up. One of the reasons, if you'll recall the discussions, because you were on the impact process, one of the things that I think everybody liked was the notion of having that entertainment/restaurant, you know, we talked about what that could be on that end of the development. Well, I don't want to lose that. Now, I mean, this plan really ought to just move it a little further east, outside of that area, so that it takes advantage of just exactly what you said and what Kathy said earlier.
Right.
That's the ideal place for that kind of thing.
Thank you.
You could do an urban chestnut there that would make urban chestnut jealous.
All right. Hey, Sunny, I promised Alderwoman Evelyn that she could, she would be next, and then I promise we'll get to you.
Okay, I don't have too much to say. Just a couple of comments. I think we ought to avoid, am I talking too loud? I can't.
No, you're good.
Okay. I think we ought to avoid TIFs as much as possible. You know, you see, the city of St. Louis gives them away like candy, and they're always in debt. We don't want to go there. The other thing is, have we thought anything about any housing of any sort in there, or do we want to strict, is the idea to stay strictly with retail?
No, no. There is housing in there in multiple places, and those developers have been stepping up there. We've heard from, what, probably three or four of them?
Yeah, because that's, you know, that's built-in business.
Oh, yeah. You need people. That's why office spaces is part of that equation. It's the office space and the residents in an area that helped to feed the rest of what you're trying to put there.
Right. Okay, I just didn't know if you had that in there or not. Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you, Alderwoman Evelyn. And now, we save the best for last, Alderwoman Sims.
I'm going to deliver the closing argument. If we go forward with this RFP, I mean, we retain the right, the ability, the prerogative, even the rope, to address all of the issues that have been identified tonight, you know, as we go forward, right? We're not surrendering any of that with this RFP proposal. Is that a fair statement?
That's exactly right. And Lisa and I will sit down, and maybe with some help from Kevin, if we need it, to try to put and rephrase some of the stuff to hit on the points that you all have made. One of the reasons we're suggesting that you put this out on the street is, you know, as expeditiously as possible, is I suspect that in terms of somebody thinking about acquiring property, there's probably no better time for that property acquisition to be going on, because they don't think you'll ever buy, anyone will ever buy any of this property cheaper than you will probably be able to buy it over the next 12, 14 months.
Okay. And then, I personally would be in favor of having a section in which they would have to address, you know, public financing. I'm not, that's not an endorsement of it, but I would like whatever prospective developer might come out of the bushes to spit it out, you know, not be coy about, you know, "We're going to build you the best thing ever, but oh, by the way, we want all these sweeteners in order to do it." So I mean, I would like to just know that upfront. And then, so I would, so that, this section that you're talking about on, what was it, page seven or eight?
Page, it's on page nine, where we ask them, item E on nine is, "Tell us what you're asking for right now." Don't, you know, we don't want to be surprised after the fact.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think the way that this has been drafted, this RFP as it sits right now, is to try to cast as wide and broad of a net as possible, because we're not limiting it to a master developer. We're opening it up to anybody. Somebody might come in and say, "Well, I only want a few acres to develop," and compare that to somebody who wants to do everything together. And we haven't eliminated everything. We've left everything on the table with this RFP as a starting point. And the thought process, again, was, let's throw that out there, and let's see what we get in response to this. Because to, like Alderwoman Sims asked, you know, we, ultimately, we have the final say on, we could reject every single thing that comes in. We're under no obligation. And John or Kevin, please correct me if I'm mistaking anything, but my understanding is that we have the ability to say, "Nope, we've got, you know, we threw this all out there. We had 30 responses, and we don't like any of them, so we're not going to go any further." And so, you know, maybe the way to do it, instead of taking a vote tonight on what we want in there, I kind of get a sense from people that you would want to have some of this language tweaked, whether it's tax incentives or something else, and maybe take a shot at that. Bo, you disappeared on me, but if you're, is that okay to do that and come back two weeks from tonight and bring this back up?
So would this be a special meeting, or would you want us to bring it to the Board of Aldermen?
Alderwoman O'Neill has her hand up.
Just to say that Bo is muted. We can't hear her.
Okay, okay. No, the question, the question was, you know, we are scheduled to have a regular, our August Board of Aldermen meeting, two weeks from tonight, I believe.
Yes.
And so one option is, instead of calling another special meeting to address this, wait for two weeks and then take a look at what they come back with and see how everybody feels about that. I'm getting a thumbs up from Alderman Plufka. Alderman Wegi.